So, welcome to the regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council on Wednesday, July 1st, 2020 at 6:30 PM. As you can tell, we're meeting by Zoom video conference. If you were to go onto the city's website, you will see the information about how to log on to this site and also how to provide public comment remotely during the meeting and the day before other meetings. We will now have the roll call from Allison, our city clerk.
Councilmember Candell.
I am here.
Councilmember Helmer.
Here.
Councilmember Paulson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harof.
Yes, I'm here.
Mayor Way.
Here. Item two on the agenda is public comment. We'll now take time for members of the public to address the city council regarding items that are not on the agenda or that are not listed as part of the consent calendar. Individuals have three minutes to speak, and in our Zoom camera up here, you'll see we have a timer. The council is not permitted to take actions on matters that are not on the agenda. We can engage in limited discussion. We can refer the matter to staff or direct staff to take a matter on a future agenda. So Allison, do I have anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment on an item that is not on the agenda?
Yes, we have people with hands raised as well as emailed public comments submitted. So we will start with Kevin Carroll. It's your turn for public comments.
Hello, Mr. Carroll.
Good evening. First off, I'd like to say I attended the meeting the other day about the Drake statue, and I was very impressed how you took on a matter in less than a month and had a workshop. And four of you at least gave very definite opinions, and you gave specific direction to both city staff and the city manager. The thing about it that disturbs me, though, is that we started bringing up to you the issue of Marin Park over a year ago. Last December 11th, you appointed an ad hoc committee that would work on this issue. Not much progress, at least in my opinion, has been made on the issue in those six months. We seem to even have problems setting up meetings. Most recently, we were told there'd be a meeting set up by the end of June, and just today, I understand, an email went out proposing some dates. In less than 30 days, at the end of this month, my rent is going up 9%, as I've said before. That's total of $75. My social security this year only went up $20. In the five-year leases that were signed, our rents will be going up about 45% over the next five years. I know my social security won't be going up that much. I'm curious as to why the statue was so important that it could be moved so quickly in less than 30 days, and here I'm still facing this rent increase coming up, as are 88 other families in Marin Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Our next public comment is an email. I'll read for three minutes and post the email later this evening if it can't be read through. This comes from Cole Lewis. Dear councilmembers, my name is Cole Lewis, and I live in Madron Canyon. I spoke at the last Larkspur City Council meeting on June 17th, asking that you include police funding the following meeting's agenda. I was not the only one speaking at that meeting with that same request. Since that meeting on the 17th, I have been repeatedly calling and emailing the council and its respective members. That's been for the last two weeks, and I know for a fact I was not the only one doing so. I was one of many advocating for its placement on the agenda, yet after this meeting, as this meeting is conducted today, the topic of police funding is not included on the council meeting's agenda. What seems to be the case here is not a lack of need or a lack of ability, but a lack of interest and desire to hear out the issue, a lack of drive to change the status quo. Even entertaining the idea of making such a drastic and bold change to the police budget isn't easy. Although it may be scary, it's possible. Larkspur City Council has the authority to amend the already adopted city budget midyear, like it did on October 7th, 2019, when Larkspur City Council agreed to increase its fiscal year 2019-2020 budget by $76,584 for an over-budget project, or on October 24th, 2019, when the city council amended the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget by an additional $125,000 for pavement rehabilitation. Recently, the Marin County Board of Supervisors voted to decrease their influx in the police budget by $1.7 million and plans to cut the rest of the increase in the coming months. It's a task that can be done, and all it requires is the willingness to hear out your constituents. It's the first step, and although bold, the right thing to do. Thank you so much for your time. And that is the end of the comment. Okay, and looking for any further public comment, I see there is none.
Right, and no more hands raised and no more emails in public comment at this time. So I will close public comment and move to item 3.1, which is my great honor to have the opportunity to present a proclamation honoring the Park and Recreation Commissioner Sandy Blauvelt on 40 years of service. Is Sandy in our audience? There she is. Well, I see her name.
She is, yeah. She should be joining us shortly.
Okay. I'll wait till she's there. And then we'll have to make sure she's unmuted if she has... Oh, there she is. Hi, Sandy. It's unmute your thing when you want to speak. Well, this is a great pleasure, Sandy, because you're one of my favorite people in the whole world, so I'm very pleased to be able to commend Commissioner Sandy Blauvelt for 40 years of community service. I only wish we were doing this in person, and you'll get a fancy signed proclamation, but I'm going to read parts of this one tonight. Whereas Sandy Blauvelt has been an upstanding and involved... upstanding, look at that, we laid it right out there on you, Sandy. An involved resident of the city of Larkspur for more than 50 years, and she created and ran an after-school enrichment program at the old Larkspur Quatermedera School in the early, mid-1970s, organizing many women and a few men throughout the Larkspur community to volunteer their individual talents into elective classes, various arts, crafts, rocketry, and more, and Sandy was very happy to personally lead field trips herself. And Sandy mounted a successful citizens' campaign to preserve 285 acres within Larkspur in 1977, preserving the North Ridge open space, raising $106,000 for more than 500 individuals and organizations matched by the city of Larkspur funds. And you were on-the-ground organizer of those funds and coordinated the massive effort of volunteers who targeted every neighborhood in Larkspur, even going door-to-door. I wasn't living here then, but I would have donated to you, Sandy. Sandy's efforts in procuring the North Ridge open space prevented a two-lane scenic road for a 360-home subdivision along the ridge line with roads access from Madron Canyon. We thank Sandy for her outstanding efforts and leadership in saving Larkspur's open space. And whereas Sandy began her official public service in Larkspur in 1980 with the Park and Rec Commission, outlasting three recreation directors in the process. Sandy is a founding member and president of the nonprofit Larkspur Community Foundation, which raises monies for projects that could otherwise go unfunded. Such projects have ultimately improved the city of Larkspur and preserved its small-town character. Projects such as Movies in Piper Park, Music in Piper Park, Twin Cities Children's Center Reading Center, and the Heart of Larkspur Annual Volunteer Celebration. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Katherine Way, the mayor of Larkspur and the city of Larkspur, do hereby thank and commend Sandy Blauvelt for being an integral part of Larkspur's community and Park and Recreation Commission for the past 40 years. Thank you, my friend. Would you like to say anything to...
Thank you. Well, it's an embarrassingly long tenure, I've got to say that. But, you know, it's been my privilege, actually, to have had this close tie to this community that I love, and it's a wonderful community, and so I just feel very blessed to have been able to serve, and I'm not going away. I appreciate all of you. Thank you so much.
Well, I'll personally deliver with a mask on and socially distanced to get the board lock and hand it to you as soon as it's got signed.
Okay, thank you.
You.
Thank you. Good night.
That moves us to four, which is approval of the consent calendar. Do I have any member of the city council who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion or questions? Nope, seeing none. Is there any member of the public that would like to pull one for discussion of the consent calendar? Raise your hand now. Seeing none, I will take a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll move.
Okay, Dan Helmer moved, and Gabe Paulson seconded. Allison, may we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Candell. I see it's connecting to audio at the moment, so I will move to Councilmember Helmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harof.
Yes.
Mayor Way.
Yes. And just raise your hand if it's a yes. I think we'll take this as a yes. Is that a yes, Scott, in your vote? Yes, okay, good.
Thank you, Councilmember Candell.
Moves us on to number five, which is the city manager's oral report.
A few technical difficulties here. I only had three items for the council this evening. The first is I wanted to remind folks who may not have seen our earlier messages or saw them and slipped their mind, but 4th of July is upon us, and unfortunately, this year, we won't be able to have the Twin Cities 4th of July Parade due to the COVID restrictions. And also, just generally, want to encourage folks to be thoughtful about their safety, their health and well-being, and the health and well-being of others as they celebrate this 4th of July. It's going to be certainly a different experience for all of us this year, so just want to encourage folks to think about that. Secondly, I wanted to let folks know, we have a YouTube channel that's where we post all our council agendas. There are various places on our website where you can get a link. The easiest is to go to the city council agenda link and click on videos. When you get there, if you click on the videos tab, you'll find there's some other material now being posted on our YouTube channel. We're posting the community chats that the mayor and I are doing every other week, and we'll soon be posting some of the other boards and commissions. In the past, we haven't always filmed all our boards and commissions, but now with the Zoom meetings, we have video recordings that we can post, so we're going to be doing that. And I think folks may, you know, find it informative to get a better sense of all the different topics and challenges that we are dealing with. Then lastly, I just wanted to acknowledge that yesterday was a bit of a momentous day for us. The council was kind enough recently to honor the folks that are retiring from the city. Yesterday, we had four of the six individuals retire. The other two will be retiring here in a few weeks, and so just want to wish our retired staff well as they move on to their next endeavors. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Are there questions of the council of the city manager's report? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to council member number six, council members' oral report and comments. If anyone has a report they want to give, just raise your hand. Okay, Councilmember Scott Candell.
Thank you. I apologize, I had a little trouble with my connection before, so I apologize for not being able to respond. A couple of things I wanted to bring up. First of all, Vice Mayor Harof and myself were part of the multi-jurisdictional group dealing with the Sir Francis Drake naming, and we had a very robust discussion. I believe there's going to be another discussion coming up with the public for that committee. My understanding is that we, as a city, have some authority over part of this road. I would love to move together with the county, but I don't think it's required. So we can wait and see what the county does, but at the end of the day, I believe it's up to us to decide what we want to do with a portion of the road that's in Larkspur, and we can cross that bridge when we get to it and agendize it to discussion. I just wanted to give you my thoughts on that. The other things I just wanted to bring up quickly are, people are making comments, and I agree that we have been told about police funding issues that I believe the public doesn't fully understand, and should be part of a discussion about how we decide the police budget, even though the police budget is done. I think at this point, the public is asking, hey, can we inform them, you know, how we came up with this, what that money is going towards, you know, what potential changes can there be? And I think it's worthy of agendizing that, letting the public know and having that conversation. I probably think the same thing about the Marin Park, that I know that this comes up occasionally, and we have a subcommittee and everything like that, but I also would love to just, as a council, you know, maybe address it and say, hey, listen, you know, we don't have the authority to do anything, or this is what the authority we have to do, and this is where we stand on it, and just give people a little clarity on these issues, because I think that's what they're asking for. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I'll circle back with you about some of those things, ideas. Gabe, did you have your hand?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Way. So just briefly, I wanted to report about the wildfire JPA and also our neighborhood response groups, the Twin City Disaster Management. So particularly after the, you know, attempted fires or arson's a couple of weeks ago, I'm really pleased that there's a lot of movement, a lot of progress in both groups. So the wildfire JPA did elect their board president, and they're moving forward on a lot of vegetation management here in central Marin, and I hope to have more, you know, to report back. And our city manager is involved in the operation, so it's fortunate to be in touch with... There were certain concerns around Blue Rock, and it's good to have that, you know, that connection and that feedback. Regarding the Marin Park, we've been, you know, again, I really do appreciate Mr. Carroll's comments, and I've been working behind the scenes for the past week or so, and we do have a meeting coming up, a planned one, potentially on the 9th, and I was particularly concerned about getting something before the, you know, the end of July, when there's a proposed rent increase. So we will be discussing that and the scope, and, you know, what we can do in light of state legislation and COVID and everything that's happened. So at least for me, I've definitely not forgotten the issue, it's just been some time getting everybody together. And so, and then lastly, I did also respond to Mr. Lewis's request, and I hope we can have more conversation about that. There is a lot of information out there. There have been public hearings, two of them, and I invite those to be viewed and am open to any more discussion. So thank you.
Anything else from Kevin or Dan? Okay.
Oh.
Yes. Any councilmember report?
Dan, did you want to go ahead?
Oops, you're on mute.
You're on mute.
No reports this evening, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Kevin?
And I guess I'm online, that's good.
You are.
So just very briefly, Gabe and others have talked about some of the different activities that various of us have been involved with, so I'm not going to be repetitive there. I will just mention two things. Because of a scheduling conflict, I was the person representing us at the June 25th TAM Board Meeting, which was Transportation Authority of Marin, for those who aren't familiar with it. So that's the agency, of course, that is primarily responsible for organizing and managing funding and direction towards various transportation-related projects within Marin County. The focus there, as in almost every meeting that I've attended lately, has been on finances. There is a significant challenge within TAM's funding authority to make sure that there is money available for expectations, and there probably won't be, quite honestly. So there's going to be some real challenges that we're going to face as a community in terms of funding. Like many local entities, there will be likely some dipping into reserves, because right now, books don't quite balance going forward. So I think that's a challenge that that entity is going to be facing, and it's going to present challenges for us in a variety of different contexts in terms of funding transportation-related projects. The other thing I'll just mention is, I also continue to participate in the Marin County Climate Change Mitigation Team, where representatives from our various municipalities in the county get together on a regular basis to talk about the issue of climate change. That's something that we can't set aside, because it's happening no matter what is occurring within the short term in terms of our other challenges. So we're continuing to focus on it. Most communities are, quite honestly, a little bit dead in the water in terms of the capacity to dedicate financial resources towards current projects, but I always take advantage of the opportunity to be present at those meetings to talk about the great job that we're doing with the Bonner Bridge, and that that bridge project is moving forward, and it's funded, and we will be going forward with various environmental mitigation projects that will be related to and helpful for addressing climate change issues and flooding issues as we go forward. So again, I don't want to be repetitive of some of the other presentations that folks have made this evening.
Dan, you had a question, Dan?
Actually, I do have a short report. There was a... The reason Kevin attended the TAM Board Meeting was, as my helpful colleague, I had a conflict and could not attend the TAM Board Meeting as I attended the Flood Zone 9 public meeting regarding flood control and the current status of the watershed flood control project. I'm going to ask the Marin staff to come to an upcoming city council meeting, give us an update on that project, as they're planning to, in their words, reboot the environmental impact report on the overall project, because so many changes have taken place. So I'll be asking them to come forward and explain the most recent changes to the overall program and the cost-benefit relationships of flood fees to Larkspur property owners.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
I just want to close this part by saying that this summer appears to be a very busy summer for this council and our city, so I would love everybody in the audience to make sure they sign up on the city's website for notifications of when agenda items will be on and when meetings will be held. So you can go on the Larkspur website and click on notify me and get specific emails sent to you in regards to when meetings will be held. So that brings us to number seven, and some people have noisy animals, some people have noisy children in their Zoom. I have a noisy cat, so I'm just going to let a cat hold on a minute. Okay.
This is like a Senate hearing.
That's the first time I've had to interrupt a council meeting for a noisy cat who is very persistent, so pardon me on that one. We're going to have, item number seven is public hearing. We're going to... First time we've had a public hearing from Planning Commission in a while. So it is an appeal of the Planning Commission decision to approve an application 2005, a request for design review variance and heritage tree removal permit to construct a new two-story single-family residence on a vacant...
How do I turn it on?
At 233 Montevista. Can we have a staff report as soon as it's available?
There we go.
First of all, I'm opening the public hearing now, and we begin with, as Sky is not... I'm opening the public hearing now, and our first matter is to hear the staff report. So welcome, Kristin.
Thank you, Mayor Way. Excuse me. You know, it's interesting, you said it's been a while. I haven't written a council report on an appeal for six years.
Oh.
Yeah, they broke my run. So the site and question's, "An approximately 4,000-square-foot lot in the Baltimore Park neighborhood. The Madron Creek runs through the rear one-quarter of the yard at the back. The property owner and the applicant first started their application process in 2019. The original application was denied by the Planning Commission due to impacts associated with the design on 227 Montevista Avenue and due to the proximity of the rear of the home to the creek bank. The applicant worked with staff after that and redesigned the project to address the PC concerns, and filed the application in January 2020. As proposed, this two-bedroom home will comply with all R1 district zoning district regulations, lot coverage, floor area, setbacks, height limit. The only exception is they did ask for a variance to the parking regulations to provide three onsite spaces where four are required. The application materials also include a solar study, which shows, or a shadow study, as the applicant calls it, which demonstrates what the... that the redesigned residence would not significantly impact light and air available to the residence at 227 Montevista Avenue next door. And they provided a letter from a consulting geomorphologist who confirmed the revised design is feasible and can be accomplished without destabilizing the creek bank. This application was first heard by the commission on May 12th during a video conference. At that time, the commission was supportive of the design. They felt that the concerns from the prior application had been met, but they continued the application to allow some modification to the plans for their comments and to allow staff to re-notice the project, because the mailing notice went out a bit late. So we re-noticed it to make sure everybody was aware of the project being heard. During the May 26th meeting, the Planning Commission then heard from the property owner at 227 Montevista Avenue, who provided them with a list of concerns and some suggested revisions he would like to see occur. After closing the hearing, the Planning Commission discussed the application and the adjacent property owner's concerns, and concluded that the applicant had adequately modified the project from the original design to reduce the possible impacts, excuse me, on 227 Montevista Avenue to a less-than-significant level. Planning Commission then unanimously approved the project. The appeal that's before you tonight is based on four primary concerns. First, the appellant is concerned that the size of the home exceeds the available lot area. As they noted before, the project will comply with all zoning limitations, including setbacks, height limits, floor area, and lot coverage. The only exception is variance to parking. And also, the provisions in the MUNI code do not require us to reduce the lot area that we base the developable project off of, if there's a waterway or a creek running through it. And this is evidenced by all the development in the Greenbury Marina neighborhood and all the lots that backed to the Madron Creek and the... and Madron Canyon. Number two, the rear-facing second-floor deck will create an invasion of privacy for their accessory structure located in the rear yard at 227 Montevista Avenue. The Planning Commission did discuss the opponent's concerns regarding the proposed second-floor deck, but they concluded that the deck would not result in a significant impact that justified further revision, as the deck is placed at the far north side of the residence from 227 Montevista Avenue, and the accessory structure is placed at the far south side of the rear yard for 227 Montevista Avenue. The view from... toward 227 Montevista Avenue from the deck, they concluded would be obscured by the ground floor roofline of this single story that separates it from that property. And also, they believed that the use of the deck would be limited, because it's off of a second-floor master bedroom, and it's not off of a primary living space where there would be likely more activity. Third, the proposed residence is placed too close to the side lot line and 227 Montevista Avenue of 227... I can't even speak tonight. It's too close to the side lot line... It's it's too close to the side lot line and 227 Montevista Avenue and it will box in the single-story home there. The original denied design did propose a two-story element seven feet from the side property line next to 227 Montevista Avenue. And this was a major concern for the planning commission and ultimately resulted in its denial. The current design for the council proposes a single-story element on the south side next to 227 Montevista with a five-foot setback. The proposed second-story steps in additional seven and a half feet and has a 12 and a half foot setback from the property line. If you combine that 12 and a half foot setback with the five-foot, approximately five-foot setback provided to 227 Montevista Avenue, there's about a 17-foot distance between the two, the second-story element and the ground story of 227. So with this in mind, as well as the solar study, the planning commission determined that there would not be a significant impact on the windows and light and air for 227 Montevista. Fourth, the applicant objected to a second curb cut for this property. A variance to a second curb cut was not proposed or issued. We believe what the applicant's referring to is that the property owner owns the adjacent lot next door, which has 237 Montevista Avenue on it, a built site. They would like the property for 220, the property in question, 233, to be accessed through the driveway at 237. And the commission determined that that wouldn't necessarily be the appropriate solution. This is an independent lot of record and it has a right to a driveway like any other independent lot of record. And also, the driveway would require an easement, which would then reduce the usable lot area to 237 Montevista Avenue and reduce their zoning entitlements as well. So in conclusion, the planning commission unanimously approved the project. They felt that the concerns of the original design had been adequately addressed and this project was approved. And staff recommends that the council uphold the planning commission decision and we provided you with a resolution for your consideration to this effect. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Kristin. I will begin by asking if any member of the city council has any questions of the staff report. And it looks like Dan Hilmer has a question and Scott Candell does. So we'll begin with Dan.
Hi, Kristin. Thanks for your work.
Hi, Dan.
Would you, would you consider the planning commission approvals consistent with similar projects in similar neighborhoods within the city as a past practice?
Yes, based on my lengthy experience here in Larkspur, I would definitely say that's the case.
Thank you.
Councilmember Candell, did you have a question?
I do. Thank you for that report. My question is more along the lines of it appears that the regulations have certain things that are set in stone. You know, a five foot is a minimum, more than five is okay, less than five is bad. And other things are more gray, touchy-feely, does it make the neighbor feel bad? Does it block their, you know, sunshine, whatever it is? Out of the things that the four categories that you listed, could you just clarify for me which ones are, you know, this complies with the law and this one was more of an opinion that we feel that
Oops.
doesn't affect the neighbor?
Were you able to hear all that?
Did I lose everybody?
I think he said that it, which is, which are opinions that that they think don't affect the neighborhood, correct?
Correct. Which are factual, you know, just based on law, it's more than five feet, therefore it's good. And which are opinions as far as it won't affect the neighbor and therefore it's good.
Right. Well, definitely the project complies with all the zoning limits in terms of floor area, lot coverage, and setbacks. So the applicant's contention that the house is too big according to the zoning regulations is not correct.
Okay.
I believe that's more of a perception. With regard to the levels of significance, that's a decision that is debated among the commission members and they try to basically balance everybody's needs. The applicant's need to build a house on his lot versus the property owner's need to make sure he's not overly and significantly impacted. So they felt they struck that balance and they reduced the impacts to less than a level of significance that should require denial or further modification.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there other, we can return to the staff questions later. Are there other staff?
Oh, I'm sorry. Just one, this is Kevin, just one, as a follow-up to that. In terms of the evaluation of the project from a design review perspective, I assume that was a process that we, that the planning commission went through and within the exercise of its discretion concluded that the the final design was consistent with past practices and standards.
Yes, it's very consistent with other smaller lots they've approved homes on such as 8 Alexander Avenue. Another project a little further up closer to 106 Alexander, there's a small house that's not yet built there. Very similar kind of thing. They tried to keep them massing in away from the other properties. They allowed three parking spaces onsite. I mean, I can continue to list properties that are all over town that this is, you know.
No, I guess the point of my question was that that is a part of our our review process through the planning commission. That was, that was conducted with full opportunity for both the the project proponent and for neighbors in the community to weigh in on.
Yes, we did allow, to the best of our ability for any neighbor to weigh in. And particular property owner, the appellant, did communicate to the commission all of his concerns. His primary, I think, experience that was negative with regard to our our new video chat system is that he was unable to refute some of the discussion of the applicant that came after his comments. But he was allowed to present all of his concerns initially.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm sorry that that happened, but we're improving our video communications tools as we go along. And I'm sorry that that happened. If there are no further questions, then I will move on to the next phase, which is to hear from the appellant. If the appellant is here, Mr. and Mrs. Rivers. If they are, David and Dory Rivers, if they are here, I would welcome you to address this to the city council. And I see Mr. Rivers is there and are you unmuted? Yes, it's a little, it's good. Speak up a little louder.
How are we doing?
It's, can everyone hear him? He's a little faint for me, but can everybody hear him? Nod your head if you can hear him.
He's a little faint.
You are a little faint, so.
Barely.
Are you hearing me now?
Yeah, much better, much better.
Okay, good. Right, so council, I can may I start?
Yes, you may. Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Okay. Hello, council. I'm David Rivers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you at this appeal hearing for the proposed building at 233 Montevista Avenue. My brother and I were raised next door to 227 Montevista Avenue and I am now. My parents designed and built our house in 1952, shortly after my father designed our National Park Endland and was an early environmentalist in Marin County. I'm here to you tonight to preserve the heritage of this home. My wife and I plan to retire in this home. I currently have a wonderful young family as well. I know that the lot immediately north of my property, 233 Montevista Avenue, is a buildable lot and I'm not trying to prevent construction of a home. What I am trying to do is maintain light and privacy to my property by mitigating the impact of this new construction. It should be noted that I'm not the only one with concerns about this project and we have submitted a petition signed by residents of the neighborhood. On October 8, 2019, I attended the first design review meeting for the original proposal and objected to the scale of the building and to the two-story portion of the building being placed right next to my small one-story home. Historically, this is a particularly sensitive issue for me because the house immediately on the other side of mine was built before Larkspur had a design review committee. And is the reason design review was initiated in Larkspur at the time. At the time, my mother lived out, lived in our house and was robbed of her sunlight and privacy in her final years. Talking to the neighbor of that home, he has expressed remorse for building a house out of scale for this neighborhood and in hindsight would have welcomed a design review. We are grateful that Larkspur now has a design review process to improve the quality of life in our neighborhood. Thankfully, on the October 8 meeting, the planning commission heard my concerns and requested that the massing of the house be reduced and that the two-story portion be flipped to the other side as to not impact my small home. We were happy with this outcome and look forward to seeing the revised plans. We were also happy that at the meeting, the commissioners recommended that the builder developer have some communication with us to facilitate the project moving forward. Two days ago, we did receive a phone call and had a conversation with the builder. This was the first time this has happened and we would have welcomed it sooner and believe it would have eased this process and notably, possibly would have prevented the need for this appeal. I represent my heritage. I have a lifetime of history in Larkspur, including going to the public schools, boy scouts in Port of Adera, working first as a volunteer firefighter and then a paid firefighter for the city of Larkspur. The builder represents an older developer who I have yet to be introduced to. On May 12, 2020, there was another planning commission meeting that discussed the project via Zoom secondary to the COVID-19 social distancing restrictions. There had been a perceived error in the city's compliance with the public noticing requirements for this meeting and I found out about it very late. I don't know how to use a computer. I never liked Zoom. My technology abilities are limited to the use of a flip phone. And so I was inhibited by my lack of technology abilities from attending that meeting. According to the meeting notes, the project was discussed between the applicant and the commissioners. The applicant had, as requested, flipped the house so that the two-story portion was away from us. However, they moved the house closer to us and did nothing to reduce the mass of the home. If I had been able to attend the meeting, I would have commented on the impact of the size of the house. It's proximity to our house and the second-floor deck, which looks directly into our backyard and into our sun back back and into our backyard bedroom office. Another meeting was scheduled for May 26 and the discussion was deferred until then. My wife and I did a crash course on how to assess access Zoom meetings and we attended the May 26 virtual meeting and attempted to give our input. However, the technology failed us and we were only partially able to participate in that meeting. Please refer to our May 29 letter for the full story and to understand why this appeal was triggered and why we are requesting, I'm embarrassed to say, but refund of our $750 appeal fee. It is our understanding that is the council's decision regarding requests for refunds and please take that into consideration. Although I understand you're broke. The bottom line is that we were unable to fully participate in the last two planning commission meetings on this project and feel that this project, it gained momentum and traction in areas that invade our privacy. The decision to approve the project was done without our complete input and our only remaining option at that point was to submit an appeal. So we are asking for the following considerations. Please reduce the impact of its bulk. That's different than its bulk. Just reduce the impact of it. If you would refer to diagram one, which my neighbor actually generously engineered. We propose the house be constructed, providing a 10-foot setback rather than a proposed five setback on the south side, our side. This will create 15-foot distance between structures and thus reduce the impact to our one-story home. We also believe it would benefit the new construction in at least three ways. It would preserve two trees that are adjacent to the property line, which provide privacy between the two houses. That tree or those trees is threatened by the current proposal and there has been no request that we are aware of to remove them. We want to go on record as objecting to it being removed because of privacy concerns. A 10-foot side yard would create a wider driveway. You know, I need to bring up now and interrupt my own, my own notes because Kirsten eloquently put out what had happened, but we never had any intent to suggest that they use their existing driveway for their other property. It was a misunderstanding about curb cuts. So that's not an objection. We want to go on record as objecting to the removal of the trees for privacy concerns. A 10-foot side yard would create a wider driveway if you make the curb cut next to our house. A 20-foot wide drive, 24-foot wide driveway, allowing for parking of three to four cars. That would eliminate the need for parking variance. It would also keep a parking space on the street. And that area is really challenged for parking. Pre-COVID-19 workers from downtown would just choke that street all the time. Two, in further regard to respecting our privacy, please refer to diagrams two and three and they show the view from the deck in the back of the house.
Mr. Rivers, you're coming in and out. So if you could get as close as you can to your microphone so we can definitely hear you.
I'll try.
Yeah. Do you have a few, a few more minutes?
Yes. Currently, the, and I'm almost done, currently the second-floor rear deck allows an elevated viewpoint into our backyard and into our living space. While it is true that the deck faces west, that view is of a concrete wall of the AT&amp;T building. The real nice view is looking south towards our house and where there are beautiful redwoods in the distance. We're requesting that the second-floor deck be modified in such a way as to eliminate a line of sight into our property. That's not to say they can't look to the south and look up at the beautiful trees, just don't look down into our yard. Solutions could be, you know, relocate the deck, which I'm sure is not an attractive idea, to the front of the property potentially. Construct a visual block like a parapet to above eye level, just so that the view downward doesn't exist. Or incorporate the deck as living space. And then as footnotes, we would like to request considerations during construction, including provide a tall fence or wall. My tenants work from home. The most we can do to provide, you know, sound and air pollution transfer during construction would be appreciated. And then construction hours, I think Larkspur is generous and so could construction hours be, say, eight to five Monday through Friday without working on the weekends to minimize the impact on the neighbors and the neighborhood. And to recap, just privacy and scale and privacy and privacy and privacy. And I, I understand that you have your rules and they fall within the rules and so I'm not appealing to that. I'm appealing to a general sense of trying to keep everybody happy so we can be good neighbors going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivers. Would you entertain questions from the city council if they have questions of you?
Absolutely.
And I just, before we get started, Allison, is how this works tonight, then when Mr. Rivers signs off, we can sign someone else on, but he can still hear us, right?
Yes, Mr. Rivers will stay here through the appeal. We can turn the camera off if you'd like to have the applicant join once you're done speaking with him.
All right, just making sure. This is all a new process for all of us. So thank you for your patience on that. Are there members of the city council who would like to ask Mr. Rivers a question? It looks like Vice Mayor Hoff and then Councilmember Hilmer.
No, Mr. Councilmember Hilmer can go first.
Go ahead, Dan.
I just want to ask and clarify your experience in trying to communicate with the property owner and builder. Have you had any discussions with the property owner about privacy?
I've never met the property owner nor been introduced to the property owner. It's always been through his builder. And that was only last, two nights, it was only two nights ago. We had a pretty lengthy conversation, but in the end, we didn't seem to get anywhere. I felt as though he was just trying to learn who I was.
Madam Mayor, are we going to have a chance to hear from the project applicant?
Well, that's next if they would like to speak, yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Kevin, do you have a question at this point?
Yeah, and thank, thank you very much for that very thoughtful presentation. It's very helpful. I guess the main question that I have, given that we're addressing this issue in the context of an appeal from a planning commission determination, is are there any issues that you feel that you were not able to adequately raise and have addressed by the planning commission or by staff at that level before bringing the appeal?
Well, in the, in the scope of Well, in the, in the scope of something that we, none of us seem to have had control over and that's this COVID-19 situation, I'm very new. This is my only experience at communicating in this fashion and I really feel a lot more comfortable in the old arena and where, where the first application was put on the wall and I really felt like my neighborhood community could be there and things could be expressed adequately. I'm, I'm a visual person and to be able to see the plans on the wall and have, you know, read everybody's thoughts and minds and body expressions, that's how I'm used to doing things. So, so yes, the, the first meeting or two possibly regarding the second application, I felt not able to, to be there. And so I feel that things got traction that I would have preferred to have had input about. And I understand the frustration of the planning commission and of the developer for that, for that very reason. They feel like it was all vetted, I think, and they feel like it was all out there on the table, but I feel absent from that process and I feel that, that the neighborhood was absent from that process too, because understand that it's an older neighborhood and I'm probably the only one out here tonight, you know? Whereas during the first application, we had a dozen people in the seats and people eloquently spoke. And so I feel that the process is definitely suffering because of the COVID-19.
That's unfortunate, it's an unfortunate reality we're all facing. I hear you on that. Gabe has a question of you, Mr. Rivers?
Yeah, hi, thank you, Mr. Rivers. I appreciate you being here tonight. I just wanted to get a little clarity on your three objections, you know, scope, privacy and proximity. It sounded to me like privacy was really the issue and, you know, that the project is legally within scope and the proximity also within zoning codes. Could you maybe clarify, is, is, you know, scope and proximity just another way of saying you want a sense of privacy or, you know, is there something I'm missing there?
Well, the only subject my wife just reminded me of, the owner owns the property next door and it has a, you know, built in an earlier time, somewhere in the 30s, I would imagine, a structure, a garage over at the creek that's in not usable condition. In the 80s, mid 80s, we had a large, you know, rain event. I think that was probably the one that did send some wind pretty good and a lot of the county. And at that time, debris collected under that structure and caused flooding under the applicant's home on, on the property and into our living room on our property. So we are in technically maybe not a flood plain, but we're in a very precarious flood area. So a couple of my concerns are when we do cover that land as much as is going to be covered, that that will only increase the ability of the creek to suck up the water, that it will cause our neighborhood to, to suffer more from it. How much, I couldn't measure that, but I would encourage when they put down, you know, pavement or whatever they put down, that they try to use permeable products for that reason. I know that, that, that there's a letter from your planner, you know, stating that if the house is moved over, that it would be moved closer to the creek and I, I don't like to accept that as a justification. I'm very much an environmentalist and very much in protection of the creek and so I'm not suggesting that if the house is moved over, it has to create quite the contrary. I would suggest if you move over and further away from the creek and if that means reducing its footprint, then do that, you know? Maybe make it up by enclosing that elevated deck, you know, somehow or turn a wall, start a wall sideways so it takes up two inches less because the creek comes in at an angle so moving it closer to me won't equate to the same distance that would have to be moved towards the creek. It would be inches compared to feet. So anyway, I just had to get that off my chest.
Okay.
But, yeah, but my number one thing is privacy for certain.
All right, you hold on with us for a little bit. Our next is the opportunity for the applicant. Oh, wait, Scott, do you have a question of Mr. Rivers or a question of staff?
No, I actually have a question for Kristen, if that's okay.
Sure.
Kristen, I'm reviewing the, the layout and it looks like there is a five-foot setback on the south and about a 10 and a half foot setback on the north. Is that because of the creek that we, we wouldn't want it to be, you know, right in the middle of the lot?
Well, it's two reasons, I think. First is the creek. In order to maintain a similar sized home they had originally proposed, they seemed to have shifted the footprint over to the south, two feet, and that gave them a larger distance from the creek bank as well because of the angle. And the other reason they expressed to the planning commission was that they needed some kind of yard that wasn't a deck and they were trying to maintain that wider side yard so that then they could have some place to, for the kids to recreate someday or something. That seemed to be the reason the applicant provided and you can certainly ask them that question as well.
Okay, and from a, from a legal perspective, is, is there a requirement of distance from the creek that they have to maintain in order to, to be approved?
We don't have a specific codified setback, but when you get too close to a creek, you have a greater ability to put too much load on the bank and cause it to fail in simple terms. So the larger the distance between the creek bank and the weight of the home, the better in terms of engineering. So at this point, they're only providing about four and maybe four and a half feet from the bank. So it's not huge and we would hate to make it smaller.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so as this process goes along, the next opportunity we have is to hear from the applicant if they are interested. And then following that, we will open this up for the public and other interested parties who might like to speak. So I do see one raised hand, so you'll become, you'll come up next after the applicant. So do we have an applicant here that's, is that Benjamin Faber? Sir? You'll need to unmute.
Hello?
Would you try that again? Okay, hold on, technical difficulties.
Hey, can you hear me?
That's much better. Oops, that's much better. Could you please introduce yourself and tell us what your role is in this appeal?
Yes, hi, everybody. My name's Benjamin Faber. I am the owner of 233 Montevista Ave. Like the neighbor, David, I was also raised in Larkspur for whatever value that is. I was raised at 145 Magnolia. I went to Neil Cummins Hall Middle School, Redwood High School. I volunteer with Twin Cities Little League in Larkspur. I have deep roots to the community and I would love nothing more than to build a beautiful home for my family in a neighborhood I never thought I could afford.
Is there, do you have your builder here or is there others representing you?
I don't know if, if Dave is on here. Is there a way for you to see if Dave is on here?
David Grabham, if you could raise your hand to indicate which participant you are, we can have you join us in the video.
Unless he's not here. Okay, he doesn't have to be, I just.
Okay.
Just, I'm just offering that because sometimes what applicants will, or will bring their builder to answer questions or something, so it's okay, you don't need to.
Yeah, so Dave, Dave has been really thorough, working with Kristen, Lorain, Neil Toft, rest of the standing commission. I think we've done all of their requests and more. I've paid fees out the nose to everybody to, to make this happen and I'm, I'm not complaining, I'm just, you know, keeping my mouth shut, giving everyone the time they need. So I, I think that we've respected the guidelines from the city. I think we've respected the entire neighborhood. The woman who lives across the street, Liza Matthews, she was the first grade teacher of mine at Neil Cummins and she's still there. So I, I really don't know at this point what we could have done differently to respect the community and the neighborhood and the Larkspur Planning Commission. So I, I think that's, I think we've pretty much made our case at this point and I appreciate you guys giving me an opportunity to show my face and express how much of a local I am as well.
Okay, would you entertain questions from the city council?
Absolutely.
Does any, at this moment in this process, does anyone from the city council have a question for Mr. Faber? Looks like Councilmember Helmer does.
Hi, thanks for your attendance. Have you had any discussions with Mr. Rivers regarding privacy between the properties?
No.
Would you be interested in, in helping them out a little bit to the extent possible?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there further questions, Mr. Faber, at this time? We can always come back after. Okay, so just hanging there until, until we move on to the next step, which is to offer any interested person who may be in the audience to speak. And I did see one hand raised. And would you like to introduce your, Allison can unmute you and bring you in and would you introduce yourself, please? And it looks like we don't have a lot of people to speak, so just try to keep it to three minutes, but it doesn't look like we need to start the timer unless it gets too long.
Can you hear me?
Yes, a little louder, please.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, could you introduce yourself and where you live?
Yes, I'm Farzad Fady, owner of 225 Montevista. I just wanted to keep it clear, you know, I just want to, I heard the whole meeting and I just want to clear something regarding clarification. One is Kristen mentioned that, you know, this, I just want to mention that, you know, this house, particular house is different from the past practice because of the close proximity to the creek. I mean, none of those small lots are that close to the creek. That's, that's making it unique, a unique development and unique property. The other one is regarding that, you know, she mentioned that, you know, the setback is actually 17 feet from this, the second story to the, to the house of Mr. Rivers. And actually, the most important part is the first story. First story, the setback is five feet. The second story, I mean, because Mr. Rivers' house is one story, so the setback is between the first floor, not the second floor. And the other one is I pretty imposed that the variance for the parking. I mean, it's Montevista Avenue is very difficult for, for parking, you know, especially during the hours of those restaurants that, you know, the people, employees, they come and park here. So, so the parking space is very valuable for the people, you know, a lot of these people live in Montevista, they don't have even parking space, okay? They don't have garage, they don't have a driveway, you know, they, they park their car on this, on the street. Now, this house has a three-car garage, I mean, I mean, one-car garage and two space on the driveway, okay? So normally, you know, that, you know, the garage, normally one-car garage normally converts into the storage. So they have only two parking on a, on a driveway. By moving the house toward north, okay, by 10 feet, make setback 10 feet and five feet on the, I mean, five feet on the other side, you add this 10 feet and you can, you can add this 10 feet into the driveway, you know, without even losing its parking space because in that case, you have a 10 feet and whatever is 16 feet, you become like a 24-feet garage. You can park three cars on the parking lot. Honestly, if you move the house toward north, they get more sun because that, that's the south exposure, they get more sun into their house, okay? They give Mr. Rivers, you know, more privacy and make everybody, and they don't lose that space on the back, you know, they can, I mean, they can, they can keep the deck on the same size. They move the house five feet and so the access to the deck is moved five feet toward north, but it doesn't change anything. There are, there are many ways to accommodate both these parties, you know, and, and they should sit down and go over these things, you know, go over the drawing and all that, you know, come up with the compromise and solution instead of, I mean, not talking to each other and this way. So anyway, that's what my, thank you for your time and I just.
Thank you, Mr. Farzad. I see from the record, you were able to provide your comments to the planning commission, looks like twice. Were you able to provide those comments directly to the planning commission also?
No, the first time I, I submitted to the planning, planning commission, the first time, the last meeting and this time I didn't have any, I, I did some markup on the drawing and this proposal, if you look at the, the attached documents, you know, you see some, some markup sketch, drawing, okay? It shows that, you know, if you move the house, change the setback to 10 feet, what will happen? And also it shows that, you know, from the, from the deck, how to look into the Mr. Rivers' backyard and property.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for attending. I see another raised hand. David Grabham?
Yeah, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Could you please introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'm David Grabham, the designer of the project. I'm sorry, I was having some technical difficulties getting actually access online and I'm on my phone now unfortunately and can't get computer access. So I just wanted to, I'm sorry I missed the beginning of, of the meeting. I, like I said, I was trying to get on and, and couldn't. So I can go ahead and if I have a few minutes can kind of give a rundown of what we've done so far to, to try to accommodate the, the neighbors and also the creek.
And can you, if, I think we have a few minutes for that. If you will focus on, it seems to be the main issue was the privacy concern and the location. Did it, are there other two, are there other issues that council members would like to focus on? It seems like Mr. Rivers has brought those two to the fore. Any others? Well, let's go for those two first, David.
Okay. So during the initial council or the initial planning commission meeting, we really tried to listen to the neighbors and especially Mr. Rivers' ideas and suggestions and ways that we could improve and enhance the livability of his property specifically as he's under the biggest effect. And also a big issue was the creek in the backyard and they had mentioned over and over several neighbors actually in the original meeting that if we just flipped the house and, and the high side was on the other side, then potentially that would put the deck on the other side, which would give them more privacy and it would also, it would also give them a much better daylight angle, which you can see in the plan. We showed the existing plan and then the new plan of how we flipped the house. Now, the second story is between the two properties, so it's, it's actually 12-foot six plus on David's side and 11-foot six or something toward the other property. And what we had done is because of the creek, we had put the deck in the back so that there wouldn't be the potential to landscape out through the creek. And what that did was that caused them to not have a yard. It also caused the family room on that side to pinch where the, the main doors that access the family room go out. And basically what we did to further try to create privacy for him and the neighbors was create a side yard for my client so that the, the kids who actually, or future kids or whoever would be in that side yard where we could do some nice grass and stuff like that, which was to get it as far away from his house as possible and then create the yard there. So, but also tying that into moving the house over so that we were further away from the creek, still respecting the setbacks that the front yard setback, in the backyard setback. So basically moving the house over pinched the side where his main family room access is. And so what we were trying to do is accomplish several different things from several different comments that we got and I feel like. comments that we got, and I feel like we actually were able to do that. I don't think anyone in these types of situations are ever 100% satisfied or happy, but the, the idea was that we were trying to make everything better for all the parties, and I think we accomplished that in our design. And that's exactly what the response from the, the Planning Commission was, was, was an overwhelming response of, wow, this is a huge change from the other plan, and, and none of them had a, had an issue with the plan, and we got a unanimous vote to move forward with the project. So I did reach out to David Rivers a few nights ago. We had a really nice conversation. He's a really nice guy. I totally understand that he wants, you know, everything he can get for his property, and I understand that. I think that we're, we're trying to, to design this house inside the parameters and, and the code set forth, and also develop a beautiful house that enhances the neighborhood in tune with the neighborhood. And I know that several of the suggestions that were made in, in both of the meetings, you know, kind of go outside of those, those pieces. So when we, when we put together the redesign, we tried to work as much as we could with the planning, or with the Planning Department as we did from the very beginning, and then again, trying to, to capture all those pieces that make this home a really livable home for our client, give him some kind of yard, it's not much yard, but it is a little bit of yard, respect the creek, not block the, the daylight angle coming into Mr. Rivers' house, which I think that if you look at the, the difference between the first plan and the second plan, you know, we're not required to set that second story back 12 foot six. I think, you know, the, the code is that basically you don't want double stacked walls, so it could be set back two feet and still within the code of the design review. But again, we understand that he has, you know, two massive, three massive redwood trees that block most of the light coming down into that property, but our daylight angle goes down to his garage, is mainly the main part where we'd be blocking in one kitchen window. And then everything else is pushed behind the house. So Ben's house stops and then David's house continues. The only part where it really mirrors back is that one kitchen window. So I don't know how much that second story, if you guys have been out to the property, the, the, the second story really doesn't block much of his light coming into that, that property at all, so.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation, and I was very, that reviewed the documents well for us. I'd like to, are you open to having some questions from?
Yeah, definitely.
Does anyone from the City Council have any questions of Mr. Grabham? I hope I'm pronouncing that right. Go ahead.
Yeah, that's fine.
Hi, Dave. So was, was it your role to communicate with Mr. Rivers through this process?
Yeah, so I, I, the, the first meeting when we submitted for design review, our client opted out of meeting with the neighbors, and we had thought that our, our design was thoughtful and obviously we're a little naive in that way considering the people that showed up to the meeting, and, and it was a lot of people who had a lot to say, and, and we really tried to, like I said, listen to what they said. We got David Rivers' address from the, from the, after that meeting, when we met with the Planning Commission, I asked them for his address so that I could send him a letter and an email, which I did, and I dropped off several letters to his rental, trying to connect to him in hopes that I could get together with him and show him the plan. In my understanding was that by the second Planning Commission meeting, he hadn't even seen the plan, which I, I don't know if that's correct or not, but that's just what he said in his opening statement, that he hadn't even seen the plan. So I did reach out to, to the neighbor several times with several letters saying, hey, we would love to walk you guys through, we do a modeling program, so we wrote up an email and said, hey, we'd love to bring a computer over and show you the model of what this house looks like. We tried to, like I said, do a really beautiful design, and then we could really show them what that looked like, and we, we didn't get a response at all. So several failed attempts. And then I reached out to him a couple nights ago because I just wanted to talk to him and, you know, see what, see what he thought about the plan and what was going on. And, you know, I, I've been designing not as long as most, but for building my whole life, and, and I do understand that, you know, I, I've attended a lot of, or been in a lot of design review meetings in, in every single town in Marin, and I know that, you know, people want, they want as much as they can get, which I, I totally understand is totally reasonable to want that. It's just not, it's just not possible in, in a lot of circumstances. So what we tried to do was give them as much as we could, but trying to also appease several different people in, in areas besides just him, and I think we accomplished that with our redesign.
All right. Further questions? And I see a, a member of the audience would like to participate also. Are there further questions from Mr. Grabham? Right, just hold on there, and you are a participant, and also there is another participant with hand raised. Would you like to introduce them? Or is that a question, is that someone with a question? It's hard to tell, they don't have their name there.
I think that's James Holmes-Larkspur.
This is a public hearing, so you can participate, yes.
I just wanted to, James Holmes-Larkspur, since privacy is a specific consideration in, in design review and something that needs to be touched on in the findings, if there are some relatively modest but efficacious modifications that could be made, I would urge the council to, to consider them, and, and one that I heard was a solid wall on the deck facing the applicant, the appellant, which would certainly seem to be one possibility. Thank you.
Well, I need to remind everyone that this is an appeal, it's from an action from the Planning Commission, and I'd like to thank Vice Mayor Hara for reminding me on the platform. It's not an evidentiary hearing, and so unless the Planning Commission acted in a manner inconsistent with the code requirements or otherwise acted in an arbitrary and capricious manner, our ability to overturn the commission's actions is really constrained by that. If, if they did enact the structure of the decision-making the way we have created in our code, is that correct, Sky? Snod your head if I was right.
So the way that the municipal code is written, sorry, to just.
I just want to bring it up because we have two new council members who, and we haven't had an, we haven't had one of these in a number of years. So just a reminder of what we're to, what we're to think about.
Yeah, so the City Council, the way the municipal code is written, the City Council can consider new evidence if new evidence is presented, but ultimately you have to make the same decision that the Planning Commission did, which is, is there sufficient evidence in the record to support the making of the findings? Or if you look at the findings and the evidence in the record, can you not make the findings? Part of the reason for having the Planning Commission is to bring together members of the public who have some interest or expertise in this area to take a very close look at the record in detail and make a decision based on that. And, and so the, the informal, you know, relationship is that the, the City Council often relies on the Planning Commission to address detailed aspects of the project, but ultimately if the City Council receives new evidence or considers the evidence differently and believes that, that the findings can't be made, the City Council can make that decision. But there is, there is some weight given to the Planning Commission's considerations since they tend to spend more time with the record than the City Council does.
Thank you for clarifying that, because I just want to make sure everybody knows that that's the, the lens in which we look at this situation. Is there, Gabe, did you have a question about that? Oops. Gabe, you're muted.
Yeah, sorry, I'm muted. I was wondering if I could ask Kristin briefly, I, there was quite a bit of detail in I read the report, but just the, you know, the summary of the, the privacy findings. So you did mention a line of sight had been considered and you gave some measurements. If you wouldn't mind just very succinctly repeating that for me, and perhaps Mr. Grabham or, or Mr. Rivers can, can comment, because that, that seems to be the heart of the matter that, that I've gathered so far.
Okay. Well, as it's designed, the ground story is five feet from the property line, but it's a low elevation similar to the existing home. The second story is another seven and a half feet away, so 12 and a half feet from the property line to the wall of the second story. And I'm not sure if Mr. Grabham covered it well, but there are really no significant windows on that elevation either. They removed all their windows looking that way to maintain privacy views towards the 227. But the deck, it's a similar setback. It's about 17 feet to the corner, rear corner of the home from the deck, and they're looking over that lower roof line, and if they're trying to look that way, you know, into their rear yard. The commission looked at the findings, which requires that they determine there is a significant impact, and they, their conclusion was it based on the design and the distances between the deck and the rear yard features, that there wasn't a significant impact, that it had been mitigated adequately with this revised design.
So had the windows not been removed, that would be considered a significant impact?
If they had continued to maintain large viewing windows from the home where people would be living all the time and looking out of them, then they would have considered that more of an impact.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor, Mayor Way, this is the Planning Building Director.
Oh, yes, hello, Mr. Hara.
If I could just weigh in for one clarification, because.
Yes.
We're using the term significant, which is sometimes is somewhat of a sequoia term, it's can be mixed up with state law. The actual finding relative to privacy, light, and air is whether or not the project avoids significant or unreasonable, unreasonable loss or interference with privacy, light, or solar access. So in the context of design review, the term unreasonable, unreasonable loss is often the kind of terminology or the consideration made by the Planning Commission, in this decision when they determined this was consistent with that finding.
Okay, thank you. We are still in public hearing. Do I have any other?
Yeah, I, if I could, if I could just add a brief note to that, is that, I mean, I do think that for the findings, the specific wording matters, and so since you mentioned, we have two council members who haven't heard one of these appeals before, so I just wanted to mention that, you know, that this point, that the actual wording of the findings matters, and that it's not phrased as a finding of no loss of privacy, it's a finding of whether or not there is a significant or unreasonable loss of privacy. And so I think that the finding anticipates that with new development, there may be some loss of privacy, and ultimately the City Council needs to be able to consider the evidence in the record that you've reviewed and that you've heard tonight and make a determination about whether those impacts are either significant or unreasonable.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Do, we're still in public hearing, is there any new member of the audience who would like to raise their hand and, and speak? It doesn't look like it. Have we received, Allison, have we received any emails?
There have been no emailed public comments.
Okay, so seeing that no one else has emailed or raised their hand to speak, and I will close the public hearing aspect of this and bring it back to the council for discussion. We have a resolution before us, which is Resolution 5620, to, which is to uphold the Planning Commission's approval of Application 2005 for 223 Montevista. That's what the matter we have before us. Is there any further discussion on what you've heard tonight and clarifications that you need from the, the planner or the building and planning and building director? Kevin has his hand raised?
Kevin, no, I just wanted to express my appreciation for our city attorney for clarifying the standards that we're required to follow with the context of, of this appeal. Obviously, we do have some independent responsibility for reviewing in a substantive way what the Planning Commission did, but it really is a focus on whether the issues were thoroughly vetted by the Planning Commission, and unless there is new information that allows us to reconsider the findings that were adopted by the Planning Commission, or if we for other reasons find that those findings were inappropriate, I think it's important, important for us to give substantial deference to the actions of the Planning Commission in this case.
Anyone else have a comment?
I'm ready to move the staff recommendation, Madam Mayor.
The staff recommendation is the adoption of resolution upholding the decision of the Planning Commission to approve the application based upon the findings and conditions.
So move.
Okay, is there a second?
Yeah, one second.
Scott Candel seconded it.
There you go.
Is there a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Candel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hillmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hara?
Yes.
Mayor Way?
Yes.
Mayor, may I say one thing? I, I just wanted to thank Kristin in the Planning Department. I think you did a phenomenal job on this. I think there was differences of opinions, and you reached a great compromise by spinning the building around, and I think, I think it was well done. And the reason I'm passing this and not because I don't want to have an opinion, I just agree with everything you did, so I just wanted to say thank you. Yeah, I think it was a great job.
Thank you.
Here, here.
The last part of this agenda item is to discuss, to approve or deny the request from the appellant to waive the appeal fee. Mr. Rivers expressed a lot of difficulty in accessing the online portal and platform and has, and has requested that we consider refunding the $750 appeal fee because of that difficulty that he had in accessing, a chance to dialogue.
I'll move that, too.
I'll second, I'll second that.
This is not, this is not a resolution, it's just a decision to approve or deny the request.
No.
You have to do it by motion?
I think you made, I think Councilmember Hillmer made a motion, and I think I seconded it.
All right, so we have a motion to grant the appellant a refund on their $750 application fee.
I, I move that and encourage the property owner and Mr. Rivers to get together and talk about how they can be the best of friends and neighbors.
We always do that, that makes it, makes community better. So do I, I have a first from Dan Hillmer and a second from Vice Mayor Hara. Do we have a roll call vote on that, Allison?
Councilmember Candel?
Yeah, I'm going to vote against that, and I'm just going to explain why. My understanding is that $750 is to cover staff costs that are required to do an appeal. I think the staff spent a tremendous amount of work on this project, and I think that's the rules, so my, my vote is to stay with the rules.
All right.
Councilmember Hillmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hara?
Yes.
Mayor Way?
Yes. All right, thank you, everyone, for your participation on that. I know these are always hard appeals because it's usually a neighbor, personal and a neighbor to neighbor issue, so thank you for your professionalism and all of that. This brings us to eight, business item 8.1, and I know we have members of the audience here for this. This is an update from the Commons Foundation addressing today's challenges and tomorrow's opportunities for the Larkspur Library, and we've received two, four, six, eight, 10, 11 written emails that came in and public comment today, and they are posted on the Agenda website. They arrived before 5:00 PM today, and they're available to be read by any. Um, they arrived before 5:00 PM today and they're available to be, uh, read by anyone and they are part of the record. But we will also, um, open up for public comment, um, at the end of the presentation. So we have a presentation tonight. Um, and are we going to be able to share a screen? I'll let you just figure that out.
I think so.
Good. Hello, Mr. Jennings. Why don't you introduce yourself and, um?
I'm Joe Jennings. I'm the president of the Commons Foundation. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, very much.
I live at 208 Montavista and I kept my mouth shut in the prior item. So with that being said, I want to thank you all for having us here. Uh, we want to thank Mayor Way and Vice Mayor Harof for inviting us to present. I also want to thank, uh, council members, um, Candell and, um, um, for, frankly, um, Gabe Paulson and, and Scott Candell at the Board of Trustees meeting, giving us good feedback on the original discussions. We've come a great distance. To summarize, um, we're in extraordinary times and we have this trifecta of the COVID-19 crisis, the economic recession, the Black Lives Matter movement. And we're trying to work with the city as it's adjusting its budget because of the obvious things you've been through. And we, as a third party private group, have been working with partners to put together an annual campaign to backstop, uh, funding cuts that you've had to do. And then in addition, uh, extend into areas that will make us better able to serve the public for the public library during this pandemic and the economic recession. Um, and we're doing this, uh, for basically two reasons. One, we believe that the public library is, is essential social infrastructure that's extremely important in the current days. And that we're in sort of a unique position where we work well with partners and have the ability to move into this area, working with the friends of the library and other groups that have been helping us. So, um, the net of this is we're hoping that during this period of the pandemic and the recession, we learn things that will help drive what the new library looks like, how it works, how it functions. Um, and our goal is to raise enough money each year to, to sort of backstop what the city can afford and continue to innovate at the Larkspur Public Library. So, um, the Commons Foundation, uh, we've started in 2018. We've presented to you numerous times. You're an investor in our foundation. The capital campaign has raised approximately a million dollars in cash and pledges. Uh, we helped raise $15,000 in 2019 for the annual fund. We've so far, since announcing quietly, we were doing this, we've circled $35,000 in cash gifts. Um, in addition, we have a plan giving effort we put in place, which is, what has approximately $1.2 million in bequests lined up for the, uh, Larkspur Library. Um, and we're doing this, um, with a pretty wide range of partnerships. Our core assumptions are that for 2020 to 2022, the city is going to have a revenue shortfall. We take very seriously what the city manager has said. And moreover, we believe that the COVID-19 use restrictions for city buildings will continue for the foreseeable future, or could come back with no warning is the other way to look at it. And at the same time, the demand for free library and community services continues to grow. Um, so the team that put this together, and I want to thank them personally right now. Jonathan Shambroom, who is one of the, well, I'm very board of trustees, trustees, has an excellent background in high technology. Lori Lerner, who is a former librarian at the Larkspur Library, is one of our champions and also had done wonderful work on both virtual libraries and what to do in COVID-19 libraries and has set up and run a series of interviews that have been very insightful with national, regional and local librarian resources. And then we worked very closely with Franklin Escobedo to make sure that, uh, he set the priorities of what programs he thought would have the biggest impact, what they could staff and support, what would fit well, and also things that we hadn't thought of at all. So it was wonderful, the team that came together. Um, what we're doing is adding an annual fund as the phase one of what was originally a two-phase approach to building a new building. And that is focus on funding the existing building and its virtual library. And then in parallel with that, turning up the heat on the capital campaign for a new building. Because what should never be underestimated is if the recent past is any indicator, we desperately need a new building to be COVID safe, uh, to have a library. So, um, and then what the future looks like, we at least have some vision of it, but it's not on our current fundraising horizon. So the first phase, the annual fund is, it's our goal here, it's important. Um, one of the principles that we're operating under is keeping a balance between enhancing the physical library, what it can do right now, and supporting the virtual library. Um, because we're assuming until some point in the future, there'll be limited to no in-building access. So that curbside pickup is critical. That's people's link to physical media, physical books. But the virtual library is for online programs and information and resources. The two overlap, they're supportive of each other. And they, in some cases, support the same population. In other cases, there are people that only use physical media and there are some people that only use curbside pickup for, for, pardon me, for online media. So we need to do both and not lose track of they're both important. So we worked with, um, the librarian Franklin Escobedo and Jonathan Shambroom, um, to identify specific programs that we could increase funding and it would make a big difference, improving the curbside program, adding extended Wi-Fi coverage around City Hall. I don't know if you all have noticed, but there are people standing against the wall at City Hall to get Wi-Fi connection. And we think that's part of the out-of-building experience of the physical library. And we just want to make it so it's safer, more convenient and more pleasant. In addition, we want to significantly expand audiobooks and print books because the demand has gone way up. And frankly, when the demand goes up, the waiting time increases. And then we want to improve and extend content programming. Um, in that regard, the Commons Foundation, working with Marin Master Gardeners, has been hosting weekly gardening classes, um, the last one of which had 50 people watching. It's every Saturday at 11:00. It is a terrible narrator though, uh, but that's another matter. Um, and, um, but what we're seeing is we're attracting people from all over the county and it's wonderful. And then on the virtual side, we want to expand current movies, books, music, classes, tutoring. We want to improve the website. You really can't underestimate the importance of a simple, easy to use, visually interesting website. Because what a library is, is in the media business and you need a media sensitive website because you have every form of media known on that site. And then we need to do social media creatively to get the word out to people so they can use the library more efficiently. So that's, it's about $215,000. I've been asked, um, specifically on this slide, you know, what, how would you measure success? And frankly, if we put more than $30,000 or $40,000 into the library, it's more than private money has ever done before in one year for operating expense. And every additional person who served, whether they walk up on the curbside program, stand outside the library and use the Wi-Fi, check out a book, go to a program or use the virtual library, every person additionally that we serve that find it easy and friendly and, and satisfying, that's a huge success. So whether we raise the $215,000 in three months, six months, 12 months, we kind of know where we need to go to help people. Um, and just so you understand, virtual library, it's a term of art. It is the overlap of how your website works, how you use social media to connect to people, what services you flow through digitally, what programs you have for engaging the community and building support, and then how you market it to people so they know where to go and what to get when they get there. Um, so we have the beginnings of some ideas of how to brand this. Um, what we're trying to do is make people aware of how much is already there. Part of the thing is there, I, I personally went through the entire Larkspur Library and found over 60 different offerings. And I've been involved with the library for several years. I had no idea. And it really took going down, you know, one tree after another, until you got to the bottom and you started at the top. We have a very rich, complex set of offerings, but it's very difficult to discover them. So this is just an example of how you might make that easier for people. So that's the virtual library. And it supports the physical library, the current physical library. And the two of them are what we hope to use to bridge to the new building. And that's in the future. But one of the last things to say before we leave this is our big hope is that we will gain insights during the pandemic and the recession that drive design and operations and investments in the future. So phase two, the capital campaign, these are images that we had developed so we could go into discussions with people. They are not architectural renderings. They allow someone to see how would a 10,000, 5,000 to 10,000 square foot building with a public square and 60 parking spaces sit on the property? Uh, it reflects the, um, design criteria in the planning document from 2013. Um, but it reflects some fundraising priorities. One is to show phased construction. That is all not there at the beginning. And two, to show us a public square, which is one of our key elements. And then third, to show the, a design that fits in terms of scale and scope in the area without being in a specific, at a level of detail that then would cause kerfuffles. And I must point out, there is a clock tower, um, in the design and that we stole from Redwood High School. One of their students, um, in the design competition pointed it out to us that we are a town of towers. And it turned out he was right. It was a wonderful idea, so we stole it. That's his. So this is an image from Doherty Avenue to entice high school kids to walk down and come into the library. An image of the interior, an image of the public square with a fountain. This is looking from Rose Lane, uh, east. And this is an image of the future build out with both buildings in place. So our financial goals are to, in phase one, enhance the funding for the physical and virtual library. It's $215,000. It's a 34% increase over the current library budget. Um, it is a stretch for our community. We have never raised that much money for the library's operations, ever. Um, but I believe that there are people of goodwill who will help. And then the capital campaign, depending upon what we learned from the recession and the pandemic and what, it looks at a 5,000 to 10,000 square foot building in the 5,000 to $10 million range. Um, how people can help, right now, we're starting the process of talking to people about leadership and major gifts for the annual fund. We've already brought in $25,000 from the friends of the library. Barbara Friday, thank you so much and your wonderful board for being so supportive. We're in discussion with many of our, uh, major donor prospects to get them to be interested in supporting the current library rather than just the future building. And then we're in parallel, talking about the need for a new building. In addition, as I said, we've, we have a legacy society and that will probably drive a long-term endowment, which institutions like this should have. And I, I know it's late, um, what we're, we want to be clear on is we're doing this because we're in this extraordinary time. The Commons Foundation, our original goal was just build the new building and then sustain it. And funding and building and sustaining a new building is one thing, but when you're in this COVID-19 economic recession, Black Lives Matter movement time, if you are not dealing with the current financial reality, it's very hard to have a discussion. And we believe that because the library is essential social infrastructure, that's really important to our community, we need to do everything possible to partner with our friends, bring in new people to the community to help and fund not just the future, but the present and do it in a way that meets a very broad spectrum of people's needs. People who like things online, things, people who like things in physical world, people who have physical access by driving up to a curb or can only come on in over a computer. So whichever way the public wants to use the Larkspur Library, we want to make sure that we're there to help them.
Thank you, Joe.
That's it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Joe. So, um, this is a business item. Um, we will, um, begin by having questions and comments from council members and then I will, um, offer opportunity for public members to ask questions and comments. We did, just a reminder, we did receive a million written ones. Um, so if you submitted a written comment, it's there, um, already available for view. So is there, um, thank you for that presentation. Is there a member of the city council who has a question of, of Joe or a comment? Yes, uh, councilmember Candell?
Thank you, uh, Mayor. Joe, great presentation. Um, I thought it was, it was fantastic. My question for you is, uh, you know, our financial, uh, issues right now, uh, where we're not in a position to really, you know, cut you a check, but, uh, if we would like to be supportive and be a good partner.
Oops. Whoops. You, you, does everybody hear that he blanked out?
What can we do to support you and your efforts in order to make this?
First off, I thank you for your comment. We're not asking for the city to, to spend any money because we know you don't have any. Two, uh, many of you have been very supportive of our fundraising efforts in the past already as individuals and also in being a positive voice for what we're doing in the community. And three, at some point, we will be doing, uh, more broad-based fundraising and we may ask if you would, you know, give us a quote to put into a letter or an email being supportive. But I think what's important is we've gotten superb coordination and cooperation with the city management and with the library management. And we'd like to continue that because in all truths, councilmember Candell, nobody knows what the future looks like right now. And so we might start down a path and have to change direction because they've concluded that it wasn't a good idea, or we can do something easier, better, cheaper, faster. Honestly, um, our new librarian has already found multiple better solutions at lower cost than we thought were possible. So it's a combination of, if you would be, continue to be supportive as individuals and the city manager and our librarians be as involved as they've been, we're getting great results as a result.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gabe, uh, you have a question?
Yeah. Um, thank you. Um, Joe, thank you very much for your, you know, continued focus and passion. Uh, I, I'd, I'd like to say that I think that the, you know, first phase is really a, a major step in the right direction. And I disagree with you a little bit when you say, we don't know what the future will hold. I'm willing to gamble that the future will be continually digital. So COVID- So COVID has not changed the fact that that's the future. It's just accelerated it. And and what I would, you know, want to discuss with the council and offer to the council is if we can get a more concrete plan, you know, somehow formulated plan, which I think really focuses on the education and the delivery part of the website. You know, since our early June board meeting, I've really looked over the seven digital principles you put out in the Sparkle Marketing, and I've thought it through. And I'd love to see a refined plan and personally would be willing to look at the Zimmer Fund money because I think it was set out for library purposes. And in this underfunded time, I think it would be a good discussion to have if there's something that really promises greater services to the community. And they're really future oriented and future proofed. That may really be worth looking at funding as well. But thank you again for what you put together.
Councilmember Hilmer?
I would really like to support everything Councilmember Paulson just said. But also, I want to clarify. Joe, thank you for a great presentation. I was very impressed. Could you clarify that the the funding target illustrated in the presentation for the $5 to $10 million was was only talking about Phase Two?
Yes, it's just the first building. And the reason, Councilman Hilmer, we put it at a range is if we find a virtual library and whatever the future physical library looks like doesn't need 10,000 square feet for a first instance, then we wouldn't have to raise as much money. So I think there's some changes going on about how people think about the physical side of a library and the virtual side that might change the design spec.
I just want to make sure that the city has the flexibility to adapt to conditions as they evolve.
Absolutely.
And we're not limited to current understanding of program or even land use capacity.
Can you elaborate on what you mean by land use capacity?
Oh, if 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 things change in the future and we need to think about, even as Councilmember Harof alluded in a previous meeting, mixed use, I think we need to have the room to do that.
Okay. Are there any other questions at this time? So I would like to ask the audience, those of you who are interested in making a spoken or verbal comment, you're welcome to, recognizing that we already have public comments that are written and submitted in advance. And I'd also like to ask Allison if there's anyone who has submitted an additional public comment by email tonight.
Thank you. Yes, we've received one emailed comment that I'll read now. Dear Mayor Way, my name is Dulcie Brainard, and I live at 57 Elizabeth Circle in Greenbree. I'm a member of the Board of the Friends of the Larkspur Library. I'm writing to support the Commons Foundation's campaign to maintain our library as vital element in the well-being of our community. In these disconcerting times, library services, both traditional and newly tailored to fit sequestering demands, can offer library patron-specific necessary assistance and a very particular kind of reassurance. The library offers our townspeople both a link to the past and a lifeline into our still uncertain future. Keeping a light shining on the possibility of a new library community center will model a forward-thinking resolve on the part of town leadership. Thank you for your continuing attention. Sincerely, Dulcie Brainard.
Great. And last chance for anybody in the audience to raise to hit the raise your hand or chat button. Do we have anyone? I saw one fleeting.
Yes, I see a hand raising and lowering, so I'll try to unmute this. Lilia Langto.
Lilia, are you there? Unmute, please. Oh, the challenges of. Oh, there you are. Great.
All right, good, okay. So I'm Larry Longto. I'm the president of Larkspur Library Foundation that has been supporting the Larkspur Library for 43 years. And we supported the Commons Foundation at the very beginning by providing $25,000 of seed money to support it. And we have given, over the period of 43 years, about $325,000 in money to support the library, and we continue to do so. While doing that, we've also built up an endowment fund. We've been able to accomplish that while still giving money for the purpose of the library. So that's a little bit about the background of us. I could speak a little bit more to the history of of the three, what I would call, library family or library ecosystems, but I think I'll reserve that for another day. I wanted to say one thing I read recently that I think sheds a little bit of hope in spite of all of the the dark days that appear to have arisen because of COVID-19 and the recession and and other matters. And that is that in the year 2019, there was enough gifting to charities to make that the second largest year for which there had been charitable contributions. So I only point that out as a as a matter of providing hope to all of us that there will continue to be people who will want to give and help and support the Larkspur Library. I do want to say, I want to comment a little bit about some thoughts about the the goals that Joe has outlined about improving or talking about the physical library as well as a virtual library. And that's important because there are people who need the physical aspect of things and, as Joe has mentioned, and can't rely solely on the digital aspects of a modern library. I could go on, but I think you probably all have known people who who just can't use things online or even use cell phones surprisingly the way they should be able to. And so both of those aspects are important. Before getting into that, there's one other thing I'd like to say, and that is just to compliment the city council for the selection of, I'm going to call him the library director, even though today his his title changed to be a Community Services Director. But Franklin is a very great asset to Larkspur. And I say that, you know, with all due respect to all the other librarians that we've had. He has, he's particularly, in my opinion, tech savvy. He really, really has a broad knowledge about technology and a great depth at the same time. And I think that that's very, very helpful for the situation we find ourselves in. We know that any contemporary library today is going to have a large digital part to it as well as being a community center, which is something that didn't exist 25 years ago, the notion of people coming together in a library. So all of that makes the physical part, the physical aspect of where you meet, the physical books and the digital all important. I'm I'm going to just focus briefly on the idea of improving the virtual library. I think it's a great idea to do that here. I mean, we're forced to do it, aren't we?
Yes.
Choice, but we've got to do this. The only way we can deliver services. But in doing that, we will learn a lot that will help leverage, that knowledge will help leverage the future library we built on Rose Lane. And that's a great, I mean, that's another great positive thing that comes out of the the difficult times that we find ourselves in. So Joe has emphasized improving the virtual library, and that's great. By the way, we have, this year, we don't make a regular presentation to you for what we do, but we have given money for the purchase of physical books for the children's library, the adult library, for various software programs. So we have, we, and we've done that every year, as I've explained. We've been, we've done that every year, and we will continue to do that this year. With regard to improving the virtual library, there's a nice menu, if you will, of things that could be done. And my view is, I look at that, and I'm a lawyer. I'm not a tech guy. But I think that the way to approach that would be to have a contribution by all of the library constituents, the Commons Foundation, the Friends of the Library, and the Larkspur Library Foundation. And I would suggest that you utilize this, that you utilize the library director's technical knowledge to help you or help him help you prioritize what ought to be done and what could be financed. I think that would, that would be probably a quick and inexpensive way to do it. If you wanted to do a deep dive, and it's been done, you could hire a professional library consultant to help you explain what the digital options are for improving a library or for a future library. You did get a report like that in 2010, and it showed a lot of things that could be used as a baseline for any future consultant's report about the digital aspects of library. That was not part of what was done in 2010. This is how, you know, quickly things have changed. So anyway, we're willing to help out. We have helped out this year. We will continue to do so. We will continue to help the library and build an endowment fund for the long term, for the future of the Larkspur Library. It is the world's greatest little library. That's what, that's our motto. And please think of it that way.
Thank you, Larry. And you're more than welcome to make a presentation anytime. Just let me know, and we'll put you on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for all the work you've done for the city for all these years. And I appreciate your, that we do have three. We have three, what did you call them?
Well, I call it a family of library supporters, or I call it the library ecosystem.
There you go. So we do have three, and many of them have written in, Friends of the Library and the Library Foundation and also the Commons Foundation. So are there any other raised hands tonight? I don't see any, so.
Thank you for their public comment.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Joe, for your presentation, and it will remain on the agenda and visible for people who might have missed your presentation tonight.
Thank you very much for having us. Good night.
Thanks, Joe.
Excuse me, that brings us to 8.2, which is to appoint a Larkspur Citizen of the Year. This is something we do every year, and usually that person is honored in the Fourth of July parade. However, there is no Fourth of July parade this year. Would you like to mention anything else about it? Dan Schwartz?
I think you just summed it up quite nicely, Madam Mayor.
All right. So it's an odd year in that we haven't had a lot of opportunities to engage in face-to-face and in committees and in groups with our Larkspur citizens. But I'm willing to entertain an idea of someone who we think embodies the Larkspur spirit and commitment to community. Yes, Mr. Candell?
I would nominate Larry Chu. I think I have been very impressed that even though he is no longer on the board, he continues to be involved and continues to, I don't know, move things forward in an intelligent and respectful way. And I think he embodies what we strive to be or what we strive to be after, after we the council or for any other citizen, you know, to be involved in that way. I've just, I've been very impressed by that. So he's the first person that comes to my mind.
I second that.
Well, I see he's online here. He's, we vote. Well, I couldn't agree more. He has been my inspiration on the council. He was always in his three terms and the two that I've served with him, always willing to to take this role, meet with me, to be a mentor. So I would agree with that. Do we have any other suggestions?
Madam Mayor, I would just like to ask that we also mention our resident essential workforce and healthcare workers, first responders in this environment. I'm sure Councilmember, former Councilmember Chu would be happy to share the honor.
Sounds good. All right, so I have a suggestion that we appoint Larkspur Citizen of the Year, Larry, Emeritus, Emeritus Councilmember Larry Chu, and also recognize the invaluable work of our local first responders and essential workers and health.
Resident, resident first responders and workforce.
There you go.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
I'd be happy to make that motion. It's Kevin.
And we have a second?
Second.
Allison, do we need a roll call vote for this?
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harof?
Yes.
Mayor Way?
Yes. I'm not going to put pressure on you, Larry, but I see that you're still in the chatroom area there. So if you're interested in saying any words, you're welcome to. If not, we will figure out a time when you can ride in the parade.
And I saw our city attorney was clapping there, so I think he's endorsed our our action tonight.
Well, Larry raised his hand, so we brought him into the scene here.
You know, I'm really rather speechless about this. Did not expect that. I was just listening in on the library items tonight, which I know are still important to our community. But, you know, it's a recognition that, you know, I feel very honored coming from, you know, my former colleagues and the new council members. So thank you. I'm almost happy, you know, I'm happy to accept this. I'm almost thinking of, you know, compared to what other first responders are doing and all the people who are considered essential employees. You know, I would totally defer to not having to share it with them and totally honor them.
It's okay, we have room in our hearts for everybody.
Thank you.
We're just going to have to find a convertible big enough to ride all of you next year.
Larry, we always consider you to be a first responder and an essential employee, so don't worry about it.
Thank you very much.
All right, so.
Good to see you all tonight.
Yeah, thank you. Now we are moved on to 8.3, which is to consider appointment to the Larkspur Planning Commission. First of all, I'd really like to to say our appreciation for the four applicants who who submitted an application and also participated in an interview for us. This is always very hard because we always want to encourage participation and people from our community volunteering for very important roles. And we had four applicants, Jeffrey Swisher, Holly Bogan, Michael Simir, pronounce that right, and Natasha Chalmers. We have the opportunity to appoint two, and it's always a sort of a complex process to discuss pros and cons. But I think we need to hear everyone's opinion as to who they think would be the best fit at this time for the two additional planning commissioners. Anyone want to take it first? Dan Hilmer has got his hand raised.
I would support the appointment of Jeff Swisher and Natasha Chalmers.
Jeff Swisher was the first person we interviewed. He, I'm reminding everybody. And Natasha was the last person we interviewed. Is there questions on that? Scott?
No, just comments. Is this supposed to be a discussion at this point?
It can be, yeah. Go ahead.
All right. So my thought is, I, well, first, before I do this, can you, this is obviously my first time doing this. I don't want to offend anybody. Are we supposed to have an honest discussion now and try to figure this out? Or do we just kind of pick our people that we've internally decided and then just see if we all agree?
However you want to do it.
How would you describe, Kevin, what we generally have done? I mean, it's, it's really looking at the skill set that the individuals bring that balances the existing membership skill set in my my thoughts. But go ahead, Kevin, do you want to weigh in on that? Oh, you're muted.
You're muted, Kevin.
Sorry, I unmuted myself, but I can't bring my video back on right now.
We can see you.
Yeah, okay.
So the question Scott had was how, how do you think this works well in deciding between two out of four?
Well, I think we're we're suffering from a surfeit of great candidates this year for two open positions. And positions, and I just am really was grateful because I know when we started this process, we were concerned that we might not even, we might not have candidates for these open positions. But I think really it's consistent with Scott's impression, this is an opportunity to offer our respective perspectives on the folks that we met. And I actually was impressed with both of the candidates that Councilmember Hilmer mentioned himself in terms of their qualifications and demonstrated abilities, so, but I think everyone ought to have an opportunity to chime in on that.
Does that help answer how this process goes about, Scott?
I'm not sure. It sounds like there are already two people who have picked two candidates, so if there's a third person who also agrees on those two candidates, then you don't need to unnecessarily have a conversation.
I'd like to hear your opinion, though, if you, if you think that additional candidate would provide the balance or the expertise or the background that you think would be more appropriate.
Well, so my thought is, I completely agree with Natasha in the sense that maybe I'm a lawyer and I have some feeling there that that would make a good person for this role, but she just seemed, you know, perfectly suited for this role. Everybody else I was really impressed with, but they all brought different things to the table. And I guess the question is, what are the values that we're looking for in this position? I thought Holly was a phenomenal candidate, and the reason I thought so is because I thought she came across as very ethical, and I think that she is going to do her best to do the right thing. And I think that's a really important quality. She may not have had the experience, you know, that some of the other candidates had, but I think that's important. Jeffrey I thought was great because I thought he was going to run a great meeting. He's got experience and leadership, and he's going to make sure things go smoothly, you know, and I think that's an important quality. And I thought Michael had phenomenal experience. You know, he's been, you know, he has so many things under his belt that he brings to the table. That's also a great quality. So again, I think they all had, had things about them that I thought were phenomenal and made them unique candidates. I'm just not sure what everybody thinks are the most important qualities for this position. So that's where I would start.
That was very well said. Thank you for doing that. And that was a very good overview of, of really the quality of the candidates, so I appreciate that overview. Gabe, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I think Scott did a great summary. One other consideration for me is that there is an existing planning commission. You know, I know some of the members, you know, one is an architect that I know quite well, and I'm wondering what would strengthen the team the most. So, you know, I was, you know, who wasn't spoken about much was Mr. Semler, you know, because he has the planning advocacy, the political experience, there seemed to be a great deal of variety. So I just wanted to throw his name in the, you know, in the hat here because I really felt he was good, and all of them were great. It was hard for me to say who would be best, but perhaps, you know, Councilmember Hilmer or Harof, anybody else who knows the commission well, can just speak a little bit about what would round out, you know, not commenting on the current candidates, but on the existing, you know, commission, what might be a gap to be filled, what might round out, you know, their decision-making process, their holistic view of legal and architectural and community and so forth. Thank you.
The current members are Laura Talber, Brock Bugstaff, and Daniel Kessler still. So one brings planning and other architecture and another economics background, I believe. How did that cat get back out here again? Go ahead. Excuse me. Sorry.
Madam Mayor, I'll just say I really appreciate Councilmember Candel's summary. I thought he captured the impressions of the candidates very well, and I want to thank Gabe for talking about his observations because I agree with those as well. The reason I suggested the two possible appointments was I felt they represented best the balance that we are looking for in planning commissioners, and I just thought they were the best fit. All the candidates, as Councilmember Harof described, we have an abundance of overqualified candidates, and I think it's always a difficult choice because we have an extremely educated community, and everybody brings passion and depth of understanding that really qualifies everybody. But it's always a tough question as to how to pick the best fit and who we see might have the balance of experience and understanding of the issues that the community faces.
So it sounds like we have overwhelmed, an overall agreement on Natasha. Am I hearing that correctly?
Can we, can we take a vote on Natasha as one, just see if we agree on that before we move on to the second?
Do we need a motion for that, Scott, or no? Well, these are just appointments.
I'll move Natasha.
If you're going to handle it one by one, and I think that a motion would be appropriate. So there you go.
So we have Councilmember Hilmer has moved appointment of Natasha Chalmers. Is there a second?
I'll second. Sure.
All in favor? Let's do a roll call vote. Excuse me.
Councilmember Candel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harof?
Yes.
Mayor Way?
Yes. Sounds like the further discussion is on the remaining three candidates, and further comment on that?
I would probably just put it to a test.
A test. All right.
Well, just, just to add to that, I did think Jeff Swisher was, would be a good addition to the, to the planning commission. He's a very thoughtful person. He has a connection with the community, and I think it's helpful. And I could see working with him in a productive way on this council, so.
I think in my experience, the first time we've had a position apply, which will bring me just a level of experience in a way we haven't had on the planning commission that I've seen, so.
Yeah.
All right. Any other thoughts? I mean, I, any other thoughts on that? Nope, seeing none. Scott, did you?
Catherine, I would be curious to hear your thoughts.
You know, I appreciated your overview of everyone. I think Holly was a very nervous interview, and I'm not sure she had spent as much time learning about the ins and outs of what the planning commission does, although I know she would be capable of that. I was pretty impressed with Michael and his real overall structure of understanding urban planning and policy and experience that way. Jeffrey Swisher is, would bring to the group something that's new and unusual, which is a background in medicine, in his executive experience with that, which I think might add some interesting dialogue about how people communicate with each other. So, and Natasha I thought was, had a really innovative idea. Gabe, you had?
Yeah, I just wanted to advocate a little bit. I agree with all the choices and how difficult, you know, with so many good candidates, but I, what I thought was good about Michael Semler was, you know, given the climate of affordable housing, equity, and other issues, I felt his experience, you know, the PhD level knowledge, you know, working with politics, I imagined it would be more of a divergent voice. You know, I think there's a lot to be said for a very well-run and harmonious council, but I could see some real diversity and variety in thinking, and it really made me consider him seriously. So I just wanted to put him out there as a candidate. I really feel like I'd like to vote for Mr. Swisher, but I'm probably leaning more towards Mike Semler because he hasn't really been discussed enough, and I thought he had strengths that the commission might need.
May I ask a question about that because I'd like to hear from the other council members? I appreciate what Gabe has described. My, it's not really a concern, but I wonder how the balance of the commission is impacted by having someone who is an advocate for a certain direction with respect to urban design and planning?
Oops, we lost you.
Did you, you felt that he was more of an advocate for urban design and planning in his interview?
Well, he had a certain point of view that I thought was new and innovative, and I agree with many of his perspectives, but I wonder how much of the planning commission balance would be impacted by having someone in such an apparent advocacy position to those perspectives? I'd like to hear from the other council members.
Madam Mayor, this is Kevin. I think, I think.
Uh-oh, you went out again.
One of the challenges that we sometimes have in, have in this community. Am I back?
You're back.
Okay. So one of the challenges that we sometimes, no.
You're okay.
Oh, okay. So one of the challenges we do have, as I think is reflective of what Councilmember Hilmer just said, is the balance between decision-making and advocacy. We do have advocates in our community, and we create opportunities for them to express themselves in a variety of different ways, and that's important. It's critical to, you know, a healthy democratic society. The concern that I have, having been a planning commissioner, and I think this may be something that informs Councilmember Hilmer's views, is a lot of what really the planning commission does, which is it reviews applications, proposals for development, sometimes modest things like Marion's applications, and it really is important to make sure that the focus is on that kind of administrative process and making sure that that process works efficiently. And that's one of the reasons why I thought Jeffrey would be good at this. He has a demonstrated background in being effective in a decision-making capacity, and I think that's an important thing for us to have in a planning commission role.
I think.
If you heard any of that.
So Kevin, that makes you in charge. Oh, there she is.
I just had the audio on that whole time. I just had to, once again, find why a cat is being crazy. So that was a good overview. Any other further, further thoughts? Was that persuasive for anyone?
Well, I just want to say, I'm talking about these things because it runs counter to my own personal opinions. While I might, myself, have advocacy opinions, I recognize my, my job as one of a referee in most cases, and I want to make sure that that balance and spirit is consistent with the planning commission.
We, looks like we have narrowed things down, in this conversation at least, to Mr. Swisher and Semler.
Okay. So I'm.
Oh, Kevin, you keep going.
I'm back. I was in the middle of yakking there, but it sounds like the conversation has moved beyond me, so that's fine.
No, it hasn't. We are still debating Mr. Swisher and Semler.
So I don't know where my connection got, got lost, but what I was trying to express was, based on my experience being on the commission, we have plenty of opportunities for folks to advocate within our community for various different positions, which are, which is important and valued and something that should be encouraged. In the context of a planning commission, I think that the values that are the most important are the capacity to be collaborative and to build consensus and to provide leadership and decision-making. And that's, I think, one of the main things that impressed me about Jeff when, when we met with him. It was impressive to me that we had today the first appeal of a planning commission decision in, what, six years?
Years, yeah.
And I think that that's, that's a great credit because I left the commission about six years ago, so I can't take any credit for anything that they've done since then. But it's truly important, I think, for a sense of collaboration, cohesion, and respect.
Okay. Thank you. You're going out again, but Gabe raised his hand. So Gabe, did you have something to?
Yeah, I want to thank, you know, Councilmember Hilmer and Harof both. The two points that I'm getting from this is, you know, even in the evaluation of planning commission, you know, the idea of adjudicating and, you know, really administering and maintaining a referee status over advocacy, that's something that wasn't clear to me. And I trust their experience and I trust their evaluation, you know, what they picked up from the candidates. So I'm willing to move, you know, a vote on Mr. Swisher.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Candel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harof?
Yes.
Mayor Way?
Yes. Once again, thank you to all four who applied. We really appreciate your interest in supporting the community to be a better place. Stay tuned for other opportunities to participate. That brings us to 8.4, update on city activities in response to coronavirus.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll keep this brief. The staff is working quickly to put the safety protocols and physical changes in place within City Hall so that we can begin to have patrons of the library and also visitors to the second floor planning building counter enter the building on an appointment basis. I've mentioned before, we have acquired a software that will allow us to do digital queuing so that people can sign up for a place in line, and they'll get a text message or an email letting them know it's their turn to come into City Hall. There's been a need to take our old building and put a lot of thought into how we're going to protect folks when they're in there, and I think we've developed a pretty good plan, and we're hoping probably within about two weeks to be able to invite people into the second floor. It might take a little longer with the library. We're still adjusting some of our procedures in there, but that will follow shortly thereafter. Want to thank our third-party summer camp providers for volleyball and basketball in particular. Anybody's been over to Piper Park or Hall Middle School Gym, seen an awful lot of kids over there. But if you take some time and watch, you can really see how the public health officer's instructions are being implemented to keep the kids within pods of 10 to 12 kids so that they are following the correct protocol. Other than that, we're just moving along in our preparations to make sure that we can help the businesses as they continue to evolve and deal with the situations that they're facing. That's really all we have going on right now in terms of our operational issues. Would you like me to transition to the financial impact report the next half?
If there's some questions first. Are there? If there's some questions first. Are there any questions from the council on this, ask this person? Seeing none. I had one, which was, and Dan Hilmer last one, which was, I did receive the email from our Chamber of Commerce with the updated restrict signs that are specific to Larkspur, and I thought those were a really nice addition to what our businesses can do to brand the requirement of masks, but with the city name and logo above it. So did you help work on that, or did our team work on that?
I'd like to acknowledge the team under me who took some great ideas from some other communities and modified those. So particularly Shannon O'Hare, Assistant to the City Manager, and Drew Brandickston, who is Shannon's assistant.
Great. I've been receiving a few emails saying, why aren't more people wearing masks? Well, we don't have as much control over that behavior. It's really nice to see that we have marketing material now that is Larkspur-specific.
Sorry, my printer going off here. Sorry for the noise.
My second question is in regards to the new public health orders that came from the governor today about the closing of some parking lots for beaches. Are we thinking of any closures this weekend for our parks, even though that was not part of the order? I was just wondering if. I have a cat, you have a printer.
Sorry about that, folks. Give it a second, it'll stop printing. So at this time, we do not have any plans to close any of our parking lots.
Okay, thank you. Dan, you had a question? Helmer?
Only a comment. I wanted to thank Dan and Parks and Rec, the Whitley staff, and Chief Mike Norton for being so observant with respect to the summer camps in Piper Park and following up on how they've conformed to the public health order. I know it's tough with the teenagers and the young kids. They're often not thinking about these things, but I just want to express my appreciation to staff for following up and making sure everybody's in compliance.
Okay, that moves us to our last item, 8.5, city financial update.
Again, I'll try to keep this very brief, Madam Mayor. Two items of note. Start with the maybe less positive news, but not surprising news. We continue to see the transit occupancy tax roll in at marginal, if not nonexistent, amounts. So we're very hopeful that as our society continues to reopen and figure out ways to safely do limited travel, our Marriott will come back, but our projections are definitely correct so far with respect to that revenue source. But on a more positive note, folks may be aware that CARES Act has been extended to smaller cities in California. You know, we received an update today from the League of Cities of how we can submit our application. Prior to this, only cities of populations of 250,000 or more residents had the opportunity to pursue CARES Act money. Actually, I apologize to the cities of 500,000 or more. And now they've created a system for smaller cities to obtain some money, and it's possible we can receive a small but helpful sum to deal with the impacts of COVID-19.
Does that, my list to ask you, does that have to be related, it does have to be related to COVID-19 response that a city engaged in?
It does. It does. It needs to be within the bounds of the impacts identified in the CARES Act.
I haven't done the research yet, but do our JPAs, our police and fire, fit into that? Or does that require that it be an application from a city-specific?
You're way down in the weeds for me, Madam Mayor, but I believe we will make an attempt to show that as the fiduciary agent for a portion of the two public safety JPAs, that we ultimately bear that responsibility financially. I don't know if that will be an acceptable argument, but we'll give it a shot.
Yeah, I just, I'm just thinking how much our CMPA, our fire is responding to the crisis that's happening at San Quentin, and I just want to make sure we're keeping our eye on getting reimbursed for that.
I can assure you, Madam Mayor and the public, that my fellow manager, Takuzamano, and I, who oversee the central line of fire, are monitoring that situation very closely.
Thank you. Is there a question regarding the city financial update? Seeing none, it looks like we're at the end of our agenda. Thank you, everyone, for your patience tonight, and.
I do think it's good news that we may have that opportunity to access those federal funds, so that's helpful to hear.
That was a lot of really good lobbying. I think that was being done by the League of Cities and the League of California Cities to make sure that the majority of cities in this country are much smaller than 500,000 people and need to have the opportunity to participate in these bailout monies. So thank you very much for, the city staff, for participating tonight.
Rebiol is a.
Yes. Our next.
They're not bailout monies.
Our next meeting is scheduled for July 15th.
Of course, I've lost my connection.
I tell you, by the end of this COVID thing, we're all going to be good at this online services. That is an adjournment, and our next regularly scheduled meeting is July 15th, unless we need to meet earlier for some other reason. And I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight, and good night.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for a well-run meeting.
Hi, cat interrupted.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.